Please rise for the Star Spangled Banner. We're going to be accompanied this evening by Mrs. Tanaka. Thank you very much, Mrs. Tanaka. This evening, we have the Minuteman Kids out selling us goodies again. Paul's already enjoying his. We took note that there were the enclosures for town meeting members. We took note that there were non-town meeting members within the downstairs enclosure last few days. They can't vote because they don't have clickers, but either way, they should still be upstairs. So if you're not a town meeting member or one of the privileged few that we allow in, please repair to the upstairs. I'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize Arlington lost one of our good-town folks on Sunday night, Judy Paradis, who was a volunteer librarian, a librarian at the library and at the Stratton School and on a lot of town committees. So I had known Judy since kindergarten, so I'd like to take a minute and have a moment of silence for her. Okay, thank you. Are there any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? We have one. Okay, repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I..." Name here. "...will participate fully and will fairly evaluate all matters before town meeting..." "...and vote in the best interest of the town." "I support free speech..." "...and will treat others with mutual respect..." "...and will conduct myself in a civil manner that is becoming of an elected town meeting member." Conduct myself. "I do solemnly swear..." "...that I will faithfully and impartially..." "...perform the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member..." "...of the town of Arlington..." "...in accordance with the bylaws..." "...the Town Manager Act..." "...and the general laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God." Congratulations. Now, I'm going to comment about being civil. You all know I like to be civil. During some of our speeches the other night, while some of the speakers were presenting their materials, there was snickering and uncivil noises being made. Please refrain from that, and we should respect all the speakers whether we agree with them or not. Okey-dokey, Ms. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, May 6, 2019, at 8:00 p.m.
All in favor? opposed? So moved. Clicker test. If the funny bone... Is the funny bone a bone located in the elbow? Yes or no? One for yes, two for no. Is the funny bone a bone located in the elbow? The nose have it. False. It is not a bone, but part of the ulnar nerve in the back of the elbow. So there we go. Are there any reports of committees? Or any announcements? I'm sorry, announcements. We'll do announcements first. Mr. Marr?
John Marr, Precinct 14. Back in 2000, when the Sims Hospital was going under, it was taken over by Leahy Clinic, and there was about $3 million left in Medicare reimbursements. To make a long story short, Leahy tried to scoop those funds, and at the time, the Board of Select of the town, the town manager, directed our then-Crack Legal Department to intervene at the Supreme Judicial Court. To make a long story short, Supreme Judicial Court determined that that money should be jointly administered by Leahy Clinic and the town, and thus was established the Sims Nonprofit Medical Use Committee. Subsequent thereafter, both parties thought it was in their best interest to split the blanket. Again, to make a long story short, there's still approximately $1 million that is administered by a three-person committee that I have the privilege of sitting on, along with Jackie Cash, a former town nurse, and Charlie Lyons, a former town selectman. We go out for a request for proposals each year. We're doing so now. More information will be in the Advocate on the legal notices tomorrow, but the RFPs are due back on June 7. Please see me at the break or any other time that you'd like more information. We have given out over the course of about 15, 16 years now, nearly $1 million. We still have the principal intact, but through, we like to think, wise investments, we give away, we have money to give away each year, generally in the vicinity of $50,000. So it goes to such organizations as the Council on Aging for medical rides, various programs at the school department, some in the past, for instance, Audis at Risk Use and other programs, Board of Youth Services, and private organizations as well, visiting nurses, and Minuteman Home Care. So please see me if you want more information. It is earmarked for medical use only. And again, we're out for RFPs now, due back June 7. Please see me for more information. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Goff, Precinct 7. Anyone interested in making the town a little more green and having a little bit of fun this Saturday morning? We're doing a community cleanup of the Elway Brook Greenway and the Minuteman Path. There's groups organized by East Arlington Livable Streets Coalition, meeting at the dog park next to Thorndike Field, leaving at 9:00 sharp this Saturday morning. There's also a group organized by the Bike Advisory Committee, meeting, I think, along the Minuteman behind Trader Joe's, same time, and a group of Sunnyside neighbors meeting at the north end of the Elway Brook Greenway. Bring gloves, bring some water, be ready to make the town a little more green, and have some fun, and meet some of your neighbors. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Any other announcements? Seeing none, reports of committees? Okay, we'll start with Ms. Stamps, then Mr. Helmath, and then the gentleman right behind him.
Good evening. My name is Susan Stamps, Precinct 3, and I'm on the Tree Committee, and this is the report of the Tree Committee, and it's single-spaced, two pages, so I'll just try to quickly summarize it. The... Well, first, I wanted to tell you the results of the town survey, which was in the census, I think it was in 2018. And the results were pretty exciting, and I'm going to start with the smaller percentages and then go up. Over 50% of Arlington respondents were not aware of laws in place to protect Arlington public trees. There is a state public shade tree law, Chapter 87 of the general laws, which says that nobody can cut down a tree on public property except for the town. So don't think about cutting down the tree outside your house that needs to be cut down. Please call the tree department. Also, if you have a tree with a hanging limb or something this dangerous, call the tree department. They'll come do something about it. Also, close to 80% of the respondents did not know that we now have a tree bylaw which regulates the removal of trees on private property during development. So I found that pretty surprising, and we've amended it once, and we're going to amend it again, but basically, it does try to preserve trees in the setback, the frame around private property when a lot is being developed, so it's really great addition and very unusual for the Commonwealth. We're one of very few towns that have that protection. The... Also, there's a... 60% of the respondents didn't realize that if they want a street tree planted near their house, all they have to do is submit a request to the Request Answers Center on the website, and it will go on a list, and the next time the town does a public planting, and usually it's in the fall and in the spring, they will plant a beautiful, appropriate, hardy tree near your house. So... Also, we asked if respondents would be willing to be trained to... I probably used all my time. Okay. To identify the threat that is on our borders, which is the Emerald Ash Borer, and over 60% of people said they would be interested. We did a training about six months ago, and we'll be doing another one. But finally, this is my favorite. 95% of respondents are in favor of developing a multi-year plan for planting and watering trees in town to increase the tree canopy. So, and that's great, and I'll quickly run through various things we've done and we're planning to do to increase our tree canopy. First of all, our awesome tree warden, Tim Laqueeve, has gone from, in 2018, went from part-time to full-time. So hopefully, you'll see him around town and call him with any questions. He's the best. We got a state grant, and we completed a tree inventory and tree management plan in 2018 that was approved by the state, and it lays out a multi-year plan for increasing the tree canopy in town. We have lost a lot of trees over the last several years, and we plan on, over a 20-year period, of getting back to 1980 levels and then going up from there. Also, we are now, we're proud owners of a gas leak detector, and now the tree department is testing all the tree pits for gas leaks, and I'm also the representative on the town manager's gas leaks task force that he convened a year or two ago to talk about gas leaks in town. So we are trying to do something about that in discussions with National Grid. Also, let's see. We got the fees for removing trees on private and public property increased to reflect the actual cost of replacing trees. That happened at last year's town meeting, and we appreciate that. We also asked the Select Board last fall to approve two new policies, and they did agree to do that, and one was on all projects involving trees in town, whether it's the rec. department, the CONCON, whoever's doing the project, public project, that the tree warden will be brought into the process from day one. So it won't be just the consultants, but the tree warden, who only works for the town, will be looking at those plans and making recommendations. And also, that there's been a problem with new trees dying in town because they get planted and not watered, and in all contracts, there'll be a two-year watering plan. And if you want more information, you can find this on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Helmath?
Thank you, Eric Helmath, Precinct 12, and Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee. A move that the report of the committee be received?
All in favor of receiving the report? Please say yes. Opposed? The report is so received.
Thank you. Before I give this to the moderator, you'll need this for the recommended votes for Article 68 later in the meeting. Thank you. So the CPA Committee does not concern itself with certified public accounting, but I want to take a moment to briefly explain what CPA does do here in Arlington and tell you about some of its early success over its first three years of project funding. The Community Preservation Act allows us to reserve dedicated funds to preserve open space and historic sites, create affordable housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. CPA projects are funded by a modest property tax surcharge approved by Arlington voters, plus some annual distributions from the state CPA fund. The average property tax surcharge is $110 a year for a single-family home before we deduct any applicable exemptions for seniors or low-income residents. I'd like to say that CPA makes it possible for us to do the projects that we all consider really important to the character and livability of our town, but are difficult to prioritize in the budget any given year. But I think, in addition to that, one of the great things about CPA is its ability to be a catalyst for new outside funding for these areas by serving as the required local contribution or local match for matching federal and state funding. And if I could advance to the next slide. To date, CPA has leveraged, we've funded, we've put in projects, $2.7 million for open space and recreation, $1.3 million for historic preservation, and $1.5 million for affordable housing. And let's go up one. And I just went down. The leveraged funding to date, CPA has brought in, directly leveraged, an additional $800,000 in new funding for open space and historic preservation, $4 million as contributing to the local match with other sources for affordable housing, and over the next 10 years, due to one of the HCA's big projects, will leverage an additional $10 million, all from that modest investment that I mentioned. I'd like to very quickly point out some of the successes, completed projects. Many of our projects are multi-year phased projects, and you'll read about them in your report. These are some of the ones that have been done in the first three years. One of them is just outside. The town water feature is back! The fountain, the waterworks are replaced and weatherproofed. The, it holds water. It's beautiful. It will be something people want to pay to rent for weddings again. We can enjoy it. We are so, so happy about that. Robbins Farm Park, the field renovations and ADA upgrades were completed with CPA funds. We funded a preservation plan, a structural analysis, and some much-needed preservation work to keep the Jason Russell House going and keep it up, and that work continues. And both in affordable housing and historic preservation, CPA was able to fund the restoration of the historic Kimball Farmer House to create three units of affordable housing, and to replace, to help replace a bunch of windows at Drake Village, the Hauser Building, to preserve that affordable housing resource in town. So finally, with town meeting indulgence, we'd like to recognize and thank a special young person who's here tonight in the front of the room. Arlington high school student Felix Moisan has been an intern in the town manager's office for the past several months, and as part of his duties, he assisted the CPA Committee with research, with presentations, and even helped to write this very report that I submitted tonight. We are very grateful for Felix's outstanding work and his interest in local government, so please join me in thanking him.
Thank you, Mr. Helmath. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Swanson, Precinct 5, co-chair of the Arlington Human Rights Commission.
And I'm Naomi Greenfield, Precinct 15, and also co-chair of the commission.
Good evening, town meeting members. You'll find the commission's annual write-up in the annual report of the town, but we wanted to take a few minutes here tonight to call attention to a few items for you. For anyone new to the town or unfamiliar with the commission, the Arlington Human Rights Commission was created by Town Meeting in 1993 to advance issues related to the fair and equal treatment of individuals and to create a mechanism for addressing complaints arising out of these issues. The mission of the commission is to work individually and collaboratively with groups in our community and to celebrate the ever-changing tapestry of our town, and to emphasize through educational outreach the danger of intolerance at every level. Essentially, our work is in three distinct areas: responding to hate incidents, educating the community, and engaging in community-building activities. As you'll see in the town's annual report, in line with national and global trends, hate incidents continue to rise with increasing complaints of tagging and graffiti of hate messages and other forms of hate speech. Starting at the beginning of last year, we began a more formal tracking system of these incidents and have been working closely and collaboratively with the Arlington Police Department and the Arlington Public School System on a response protocol for these incidents. We've also been forging connections with the Anti-Defamation League's Metro North Advisory Committee and the Mass Association of Human Rights Commissions to share resources, ideas, strategies, and support with other human rights organizations throughout the Commonwealth, many of whom look to our commission as a model of an active and engaged human rights commission.
In addition to a more formal system of tracking and responding, we as a commission have ramped up our efforts to do proactive education work in the hopes that we can, as a community, bring down the number of incidents. We have produced a number of educational events and trainings in town on the topics of hate symbols, restorative justice, being an upstander, cultural competency, mediation skills, responding to hate and bias in our schools, and having courageous conversations about race. We'll be having an event on May 16 about responding and preventing the hate incidents in our schools, and we encourage all APS parents, teachers, and administrators to attend. We have also run our well-received community-building event, Double Take, which was an evening of storytelling, storytelling that will make you think twice about and from members of the Arlington community. The commission has also stepped up our role as a leader in community gatherings, organizing a large solidarity and action gathering following the Tree of Life shooting in Pittsburgh, and co-sponsoring two events in response to the mosque shooting in Christchurch, New Zealand. While we hope to not have to organize these events with such frequency, we know gathering the community together following these tragedies is an important part of the healing process. We have increased our presence in the community at Town Day, Feast of the East, and all the programming we co-sponsor, and in an effort to have Arlington visibly express its values, we have sold and distributed over 300 "Hate Has No Home" signs and bumper magnets, and we'll have these signs available, sold by our AHS intern on the side during the break.
We would like to remind people that should you come across a symbol of hate graffiti in town, to please notify the Arlington Police Department and the commission before erasing or covering it. It's important that we are able to document the incident and have all the information needed to respond, and of course, if you experience a hate incident or a witness to an incident, please report it to the police department and reach out to the commission for support, resources, and guidance. We'd also like to let people know that we currently have two openings on the commission and hope to get a strong pool of applicants that reflect a diverse range of background and experiences. Please reach out to the town if you're interested in applying.
And finally, we would be remiss if we didn't mention that this has been an extraordinarily challenging year in both the world and to be on this commission. None of us expected as volunteers to have to respond so regularly and so strongly to this upswing in incidents in Arlington, as well as to lend support to the communities in Arlington so dramatically affected by hate incidents around the world. We want to particularly recognize the horror we felt in the past few weeks seeing the attacks on people of faith in New Zealand, Sri Lanka, and San Diego. And tonight is the beginning of Yom HaShoa, Holocaust Remembrance Day, a day that reminds us of what happens when we turn on our neighbors and treat people as less than human. So let's continue to build a community we're proud of, free of hate speech and actions, a community of respect, understanding, and curiosity toward the people around us, regardless of faith, ethnicity, race, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or political preference. And thank you for your partnership in this important work and in making Arlington a place for all.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, Mr. Tostie?
A move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
All in favor of laying Article 3 upon the table? Please say yes. Opposed? Article 3 is on the table. The next article we have to deal with is Article 22. Zoning Bylaw Amendment Corrections. Ms. Rate?
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. Thank you. This article seeks to correct six instances where references to zoning bylaw sections refer to the pre-ricotified zoning bylaw. So pre-ricotified means in 2018, February of 2018, during special town meeting, this body adopted the ricotified zoning bylaw. There were five references found that still reference that earlier version of the bylaw that we need to correct, and those are Sections 3.2.2, 3.3.4, 3.4.4, 5.8.3, and 5.8.4. They are referring to the correct old section of the bylaw, but they need to be updated to reflect the new bylaw. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, looks like we're ready for voting Article 22. As presented in the ARB report, so we're ready to vote. Tim's getting us up. If you're in favor of these corrections, please press 1 for yes. If you're not, 2 for no. It's an affirmative vote. 203 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative vote, and I so declare it, and it passes. And that closes Article 22. 23 was disposed of. We now are on Article 24. Amendment definition of a half-story.
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. We ask on behalf of the ARB Liz Pyle, who submitted this article, to speak on behalf of it.
Ms. Pyle?
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Pyle. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10, and I'm also a member of the town's residential study group. This was submitted as a citizen's petition under my name only because the RSG missed the filing deadline to have it considered as a town article, but I wanted to let you know this article was put forward by the RSG and endorsed by the RSG. Also, the Arlington Redevelopment Board supports this article as well. This article was proposed by the Residential Study Group for two reasons. First, it would make Arlington's definition of a half-story consistent with the state building code. This reduces the burden on inspectional services, because right now, inspectional services has to run two sets of calculations when evaluating the height of a half-story, one under the state building code and a second calculation under Arlington's bylaw. Making this change will reduce inspectional services workload and help them conserve time and resources. The second reason for the change is that it slightly reduces the massing of the half-story so that it looks more like a half-story and less like a full-story. However, the change is so small, only three inches of the ceiling height, that it really won't compromise interior living space within the half-story in any significant way. So to sum up, the RSG thought this article would be helpful as a small change that would slightly control massing in the half-story, but would not materially alter the amount of usable living space in the half-story. It will also relieve some pressure on inspectional services while making sure that Arlington's definition of a half-story complies with the state building code. So for all those reasons, we thought it made good sense, even though it's a small change. There's also an amendment to this article by Christian Klein. I personally support the amendment. I can represent that I've spoken to two other members of the residential study group about it who also support it. I can't speak for the RSG as a whole because we haven't met since the amendment was proposed. I can't speak for the RSG as a whole because we haven't met since the amendment was proposed, but the amendment helps further clarify the definition and is in keeping with what the RSG hoped to accomplish. I personally will be supporting both the article and the amendment. The Arlington Redevelopment Board, the ARB, also supports the article and the amendment, and I ask for your yes vote on both tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pyle. Mr. Klein?
Christian Klein, Precinct 10, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals has discussed the proposed amendment. Oh, excuse me. I'd like to present this article for consideration.
A second?
Thank you. So the amendment makes two small changes. There should be a PDF in there somewhere. So the first is currently, as it reads, which is the existing language, it says, "A story under a gable, hip, or gambrel roof." Well, it turns out there's other roof shapes. And this becomes an issue because most of the additions that happen at the attic level are actually shed roofs, which are not included in the list. Neither are mansard roofs. So the three we include are the first three to the left, and then the two to the right are not included, and it's kind of nebulous as to how we address them. So I'm proposing to add a catchall so that it will read "gable, hip, gambrel," or "other sloped roof." So it'll sort of encompass that. And then if we could switch to the second slide. The other is to clarify what we mean by a sloped roof. At present, there is no firm definition as to what it means to be sloped. And we've had some cases come before the Zoning Board of Appeals with incredibly shallow roofs. And the intent is that, well, that's a sloped roof. That's perfectly fine. But it's not what you would expect a sloped roof to be. So the proposed number, which we're saying, which is a minimum slope of 212, which means that for every 12 inches horizontally, the roof has to rise 2 inches. And that is the minimum slope that you can put an asphalt shingle on if you are very careful with the underlayment under the shingles. Anything shallower than that cannot have a shingle on it. So that's why we're proposing that number. And so these are just some descriptions showing. So currently, if you have no dormer, on the left-hand side, it sort of shows you where you would be included with the 70 and the 7'3", and then it's a percentage of the horizontal area. If you were to add a dormer with a very, very flat, you can kick it up there, and it all counts. But as you start to pull the shape down, it really starts to look more like it's actually sloped. And so that's why we're making this proposition. And I hope that you consider this favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I thank Ms. Pyle for the clarification that this is an RSG article that was going to be one of my questions, and I'll comment on that at the end of my comments. Perhaps Mr. Klein could help us answer a question through the moderator of the pictures we just had up? Could we have those up again? I'm interested in learning. So what are the restrictions towards putting up a shed roof? Isn't there some percentage of the area has to be under seven feet or something? Could you explain how that works and which of these up here would be legal?
Sure. Mr. Rodder, am I okay?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Christian Klein, Precinct 10. So on the left-hand side is what we would consider a two-story house. So it's your typical two levels, and then you have an attic floor. And it would be considered under 2 1/2 because the percentages that are listed there, which I apologize, using my eyesight here, I can't read a thing.
22 and 24.
So that's the percent. So it's basically a 2 1/4 effectively on the left-hand side. The one that's labeled is a membrane roof, which is a 112 pitch, which is very flat. So, ah, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. So what, so in this case, the floor area that counts is 62, is at the 70 level would be 62%. At the 7'3" level, it's 61%. But essentially, you can see where the dotted lines go across. If the ceiling height is above that line, it counts as floor area for that floor. If it's below the line, it doesn't count. So you can see the small triangle off to the left doesn't count, but all the portions to the right does. And so as you are tweaking the roof pitch, making it steeper, you are starting to reduce that level.
Right.
So it's getting to be more closer to a half-story than being in excess of a half-story.
Isn't there some restriction as to what percentage of that floor can be that height or greater?
So under the current bylaw, and as it has been proposed to be amended, the percentage is still, it has to be less than 50%. So you cannot have more than 50% of your attic floor with a roof structure height greater than presently 7'3" and as proposed, 7'0". That percentage is 50, it has to be 50% or less.
And this is all construction, new or old?
So this would be for any new construction. If it's pre-existing, non-conforming, then it falls under the section of the code which deals with those situations.
Okay, I'm just picturing, you know, personal.
Oh, absolutely.
So it would also be renovations?
It would certainly be renovations, yes.
Yes. Thank you. The next is a comment. And so while the Master Plan Implementation Committee gave a general report on the Residential Study Group, the Zoning Bylaw Study Group or Committee, and the Zoning Bylaw Implementation Committee, I just want to raise a concern about regular order, as I call it. So there were concerns about articles being brought forth to this meeting in haste. But as Ms. Pyle kindly noted, because of the deadlines of submitting to the warrant, they also, they had to do citizens' articles. And I have nothing against that because I've done that before in cases where I'm on a committee that technically needed to have someone else say okay. What I am concerned about is that we have three different groups and the ARB, who has the formal responsibility, whose silos, I think, need to be firmly restricted so that they keep to their business and not the business of the committee in the different silo, number one. Number two, in looking at the agendas and minutes, there are, in some cases, a lot of minutes that are missing. And lastly, in days gone past, before we had so many different committees looking at zoning bylaw implementation-type things and review, Mr. Warden would get up every year, our esteemed measure of wood and bark now, and he would give a report from the zoning bylaw law review committee to Town Meeting. So all I'm requesting is that going forward, that we have agendas and minutes and votes from those committees, not just a sense of the committee, not just people getting up and speaking ad hoc by that committee, but that they have votes and reports to the meeting. I think that would definitely help us have a better sense of what the feeling of the committee is and definitely help the order and make things go faster on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jalcutt?
Thank you, Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. I was struck by the original argument about, in favor of this, that it would make our bylaws be more consistent with the state law. So my question is, sometimes when that comes up in this group, the proposal is to replace our bylaw with something that specifically references a state law and would therefore make our law sort of permanently in line with the state law. And so I just am curious whether that was something that could have been done here, and if not, why?
Ms. Rate?
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. To bring it into alignment with state law, I mean, I think in part this might be more of a question actually for inspectional services because of the way that they verify what we're talking about and whether or not we're talking about local laws versus state laws. So I'd actually respectfully ask Mr. Byrne.
Mr. Byrne?
Michael Byrne, Director of Inspection Services. What is suggested would certainly work as well. I don't have the exact section of the code on the top of my head, but there is a section for ceiling heights for dwelling units. And it is presently, it's been seven feet for several years. It used to be 7'3", and I think that's where it came from in the zoning bylaw. And several times, we've had these discussions and trying to make it all one easy review of seven feet so we don't have to figure out 7'3" and 7 feet for the habit's room space. I mean, I suppose, if you'd like, we could, I don't have the building code with me, but there is a section of ceiling height that says seven feet.
I'm not really, I'm asking more out of curiosity, and I think just because it comes up so often here that we're trying to kind of rectify local laws with state laws, I guess I would recommend, and I have to admit, I'm not going to all of the meetings where people work so hard to make these proposals. But it seems to me that if we're going to make this effort, when we do, if there is a state law we can point to and we can say, yes, our intention is to get behind the state law, then that would save us the effort 10 years from now to say we want to change it to 6'11" because at some point along the way, the state changed its intention. And, Mr. Moderator, if I can ask you, because it might be pertinent while you're still here. It also struck me that the proposed amendment regarding different types of sloped roofs made me curious whether there is any state law pertaining to that that we might be able to draw upon.
No. No, the only thing that's close is it's really in the roofing materials that you can use on a two-pitch versus the one. So maybe that makes sense as well. That's easy to enforce.
So do you think, Mr. Moderator, I'm curious whether it would be fair to say that making a very specific bylaw rule about the types of sloped roofs that are proposed by the amendment would be something that would differentiate our town's bylaws from anything that the state rules really clarify?
To the extent you can answer that, Mr. Byrne?
No, I don't see that, no. If we were going to try to reference even a section of it, every time they do a new addition of the code, those sections change. So if it was 7.05 this year, and in two years when the new code comes out, it could be 8.0 something. So it would be difficult. So I think the way it is is pretty good.
Okay. Just in closing, I'd say I'm in support of this. It seems like it's common sense. I like the idea of coming into concord with the state law, but I do like the idea of not having to vote on these things that bring us back into concord with the state law if we can avoid it and just write the bylaws so that they match what we sort of expect as common sense going forward.
Mr. Deist? Mr. McCabe?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
You're welcome.
Mike McCabe, Precinct 2. I stand to terminate debate on Article 24 and all matters before.
Motion to terminate debate, all in favor. Seconded. Motion to terminate debate has been seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The debate is terminated. We have now before us, first, we're going to vote on Mr. Klein's amendment. And once we find out if that carries or not, then we will vote on the main article as presented by the ARB. So first, all in favor of Mr. Klein's amendment, when we get the green light, please press 1 for yes. And an amendment only needs to carry by a majority vote. It carries 194 in the affirmative, 15 in the negative. Recommended vote is so amended. We now have a force recommended vote of the ARB as amended. We will now take a vote on that. This is zoning, so it must carry by 2/3. All in favor, please press 1 for yes. Press 2 for no if you do not agree. It's an affirmative vote, 201 in the positive, 7 in the negative. It's a 2/3 vote, and I so declare it. And that closes Article 23. Article 25 has been disposed of. It brings us to Article 26. Bylaw amendment, billboards, and sign. Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane Mahan, Chair, Select Board. Just very briefly on this warrant article, and as many of you know, when I'm chair, I will not get up on every single Select Board warrant article. I know you all have read this and or come to the hearings. The only time I'll get up is if there's maybe a strong opinion I want to get across or see to another speaker, or if something's intertwined, like this warrant article is the first one I'm getting up on. So just very briefly, the approval of this argument, I mean, this article, I was in a deposition all day, I'm sorry. I'll start over. The approval of this article is contingent upon Town Meeting's successful passage of Article 17. This Town Meeting didn't pass that. Both Article 17 and 26 are the results of a two-year study and some resulting proposals. This proposal eliminates a town bylaw which many feel is really redundant. So I would ask Town Meeting's positive support for Article 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berkowitz, do you wish to address this article?
Bill Berkowitz, Precinct 8. I wonder if the Select Board might clarify a point in the article or the recommended vote, namely on page 3 of the Select Board Report. If you were to go down maybe about 10 or 11 lines, you'd find this line that begins, "Subject to Select Board Regulations for the Display of Notices." My question is, do these regulations now exist, or are they regulations to be formulated? And if they do exist, where might we find them?
Mr. Heim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. Some members of Town Meeting will recall when we inserted a new provision into the town bylaw, sort of provision for signed bylaws for notices. That was back in, I think, 2016. I believe Mr. Klein moved for that change to be made. After that was passed by Town Meeting, the Select Board did promulgate regulations. You can find those on the town's website, specifically under the Select Board's Rules and Regulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this article? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Board of Select, and as printed in their report, please press 1 for yes. And if you are not in favor of it, press 2 for no. 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's an affirmative vote, 210 in the positive, 3 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 26 and brings us to Article 27. Mr. O'Connor?
James O'Connor, Precinct 19, and a member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. We have before you Article 27, brought by Mr. Brown and fellow residents, who asked that we recommend and approve a warrant article to reduce speaking times. that we recommend and approve a warrant article to reduce speaking times. We've already reduced speaking times on the first time around from 15 minutes to 10 minutes to seven minutes. And the Board, I mean, the Procedures Committee reviewed the considerations and voted unanimously with one abstention to have no action. We feel that it might stifle debate, and as you all have noticed in this sessions of Town Meeting, I am really impressed with the clarity, the efficiency, and the presentation of all the speakers thus far this year. With the magnitude of Monday night's presentation on the school, it was done under the time allotted, 54 minutes. And it was one of the best presentations I've seen in this town. I think everybody's respectful of time, and so we ask you to vote no action. And I'll keep my minutes brief to less than one minute. Thank you.
Michael Jacoby Brown, Precinct 17. The intent of this article is to respect your time, the listeners. I think, I figure, if you have something to say with a little planning and respect for the 200 or so people that are listening, you can do it in five minutes instead of seven minutes. And I'd like to thank you for listening to me, and I'd like to thank our moderator, John Leoni, for helping me through the process of getting this article on the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oster. Do we have a second on Mr. Brown's amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir. Substitute. It should be in the back of the room.
Adam Oster, Precinct 3. The most important thing for a Town Meeting member is not golden oratory. It's not pressing these buttons. I submit to you, the most important thing is listening. And sometimes that courtesy is abused. Sometimes it's difficult. But I urge you to vote no anyway. I've found, from sitting here over, I guess it's been 13 years, that although it can be difficult, listening carefully to someone with whom I disagree, it doesn't necessarily make me agree with them, but I often learn things that I am glad to know. And doing that makes me a better Town Meeting member. And for that reason, I urge you to vote against this restriction. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen in the Platte, sir?
Rod Holland, Precinct 7. I think this amendment solves a problem that we don't actually have. So I'm going to vote now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tully.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Tully, Precinct 14. I also stand in opposition to this proposed article. When I started in Town Meeting, the time limit was 15 minutes, and I think it may have gone to 10 and then to 7. I'm sure if I'm incorrect, someone will correct me. It may have gone from the 15 to 7. But in any case, it was much longer back then. When we limit someone's time, I feel like we head down a path that allows the recommended vote of the Town Board to be approved without challenge. And I think it's our job here to challenge respectfully, but challenge and make somebody make their case if they seek our vote for something. Now, I tend to be a little suspicious of authority, and many of you may be less so, but I think the one thing we have in common is that we all recognize that this is our meeting. It's called Town Meeting, and it's run by the moderator for the benefit of the town. We're representatives of those that have put their faith in us to dutifully discharge the business of the entire town. So I don't mean to stand here and sound self-important, but I think this, our service here is something that we need to take seriously. The more we diminish the amount of time we have to question authority or voice our concerns, the more we lose our independence, and the more we become a body who merely advises and consents, rather than a body who exercises our own autonomous right as a branch of town government. For that reason, I encourage you to vote no on this article. Now, having said that, after doing this for 25 years, I understand why some individuals may want to curtail some of the speaking time, even if not the right to speech itself. If we don't want others to whittle away at our fundamental right to address this body, it's incumbent upon us not to give them the opportunity or the desire to do so. So a few things to consider. And my apologies to the previous speakers that might have touched on some of these, but first and foremost, pay attention so we can limit the number of times the same question has to be answered more than once. Second, if your question is a mere matter of curiosity, but it's not terribly relevant to how you will vote, perhaps it's best asked of somebody up here during the break, or after the meeting, or in a polite email the following day. Third, if your observation is intended to demonstrate your subject matter expertise, but isn't particularly aimed at informing the debate, perhaps it's not the best use of the meeting's time. Fourth, when it's your turn to speak, be prepared. Fifth, just because you're good with budgets doesn't mean you have to speak on every budget. And of course, just because we're giving you seven minutes, it doesn't mean you have to use all seven. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jalcutt.
Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. I am aware that I am braver than some people in this room, and that I keep getting up here and wasting perhaps some of your time, hopefully helping some of you with things I have to say. I don't, give me a, give me a, give me a 20 seconds. I'll try to pass a new bylaw next time that gives me 20 seconds to make a point. The thing that strikes me is, I don't really believe the, it doesn't strike me as common sense that this change would make it more comfortable for people to get up and speak. What I've noticed is people who get up and speak less frequently often seem nervous, pressured, impacted by the constant tickdown of this timer. And they are not as fluent in speaking quickly. I think I speak pretty quickly. I get my point across quickly. I'm a fast thinker. I'm getting a lot of words across. Some people deliberate as they think up here, and it makes them nervous. They're not necessarily going to use all seven minutes of the time that they've been allotted, but to look at a five-minute timer, or three-minute timer, or whatever we end up with, would just make them that much more nervous. So frankly, I don't think the seven-minute limit often causes us that much grief. Sometimes it is painful, but it is rarely torturous. So I think this is, I would agree with a previous speaker who said this is addressing a problem that doesn't really exist. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Helmoth.
Pass.
Pass. Mr. Deist.
Passed.
Passed. Mr. Fisher.
Passed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8, also a member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. If my recollection serves me correctly, from when I was first here 15 meetings ago.
No action.
We hadn't, there was no time limit. And our meetings did, our meetings did tend to go on, sometimes 18 nights or something. But, you know, there was no, there was no Internet, there was no email, there was none of this computer stuff that keeps us so fascinated that we have to rush home and do it if we're not doing it on our tablets right now instead of listening to me. But, you know, the point I should like to make is, we reduced, as has been mentioned, to, first it was 15 minutes, then 10, then 7. And having been up here a few times, I can assure you that the seven minutes, if you want to make any kind of a presentation, seven minutes is really the minimum amount of time in which you can fairly put that, that presentation, that idea, that article, whatever it is, if it has any complexity before the body. And so to limit it to five minutes would really constrict it unduly, I believe. So we have, you know, we come to this, as Mr. Tully particularly said so eloquently, we have a responsibility. We are representing the people of the town. And we come here on our own volition and with the support of our constituents to do their business. And if it means listening to someone for seven minutes to put forth something that's for the good of the town generally, that should not be a problem. Now, earlier in this meeting, we gave, we gave one public body 20 minutes to make their presentation. Another time, just on Monday, we gave a public body an hour to make their presentation. Most people don't ask or need that kind of time, but seven minutes is really, really not very long if you want to push something that needs a little explanation. And if it doesn't, as is pointed out, many people speak less than seven minutes. Like, I'm going to speak less than seven minutes if this clock is right. So, anyway, I join the other speakers and the other members of our Procedures Committee, which is established by you and charged with doing the best we can to design the right procedures for Town Meeting, to make it as efficient and pleasant and productive as possible. So I urge you to vote no on the substitute motion and no action on the article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Diggan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leonard Diggan, Precinct 3. Initially, I was against this, but then I had lunch with a very wise Town Meeting member, and kind of relating to what the moderator says, Mr. Moderator says at the beginning of the meetings, about three minutes being a good amount of time, five minutes kind of pushing it, and seven minutes being way too much. I started leaning against it. But then we had the beginning of Town Meeting, and for a lot of reasons that have been stated already, I'm now leaning against it, very strongly so. But if it does pass, I would hope that we would use this not to reduce debate time, but to allow for more speakers. So for instance, instead of, you know, in 35 minutes only having five speakers, we would allow for seven speakers. And finally, especially since the Select Board recommended this in a 4-1 decision, if it passes, maybe if it doesn't, maybe in Select Board meetings, especially when we're doing new business, Select Board members could maybe keep their comments to five minutes?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Motion to terminate debate under all items under this article.
Done in a speedy 10 seconds. We have motion to terminate debate, and all matters under the article. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Debate is terminated. It's a two-thirds vote. We have now before us the recommended vote of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee of no action. And we have a substitute motion by Mr. Jacoby Brown to limit the speaking times, the first time up five minutes and the second time up three minutes. So first, we're going to take Mr. Brown's substitute motion. All in favor of Mr. Brown's substitute motion, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Sir, wait, hold, wait, come, I can't hear, I understand you. Come up to the mic. Hold the clock, please. Tim, reset the clock.
Mr. Moderator, could you please?
Right into the mic and introduce yourself.
Ian Goodsell from Precinct 11. Could you please, this first vote is for the, could you please explain this first vote again?
If you want to limit time, if you wish to limit the times to five minutes and three minutes, you will vote yes for Mr. Jacoby Brown's substitute motion. That would substitute that for the recommended vote of no action. If you don't want to limit the times, you will vote no on Mr. Jacoby Brown's substitute motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay? Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Want to restart our clock there, Mr. Voting Administrator? Okay. If you want Mr. Jacoby Brown's substitute motion and limit time, vote 1. If you do not, vote 2 for no. Bless you. Your vote fails. 26 in the affirmative, 178 in the negative. We now have before you the recommended vote of the zoning, of the, excuse me, of the Town Meeting Procedure Committee for no action. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's unanimous vote of no action, and I so declare it. That closes Article That brings us to Article 28, bylaw amendment, Recycling Committee Membership and Mission. Recycling Committee's going to present.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Larry Slotnick, Precinct 7. So we're here for a consideration of Article 28. This is about the Recycling Committee, which was formed by Town Meeting in 1995. This article makes one fairly simple adjustment, and one that is also fairly simple. It's simply intending to expand the mission of the committee. Next slide, please. So the bylaw currently allows the committee to be consisted of up to eight residents of the town, plus the town manager's appointee, who is currently the town's recycling committee or recycling coordinator, Charlotte Milan. We want to expand that to 10 residents, plus the town manager's appointee. This is because we have a lot of work to do and have a much expanded mission that we want to start pursuing, which we have been pursuing this year. Next slide, please. So yes, we've been called the Recycling Committee. Recycling, as you know, is one of the three Rs that were kind of brought into common usage back in the 1970s, along with reduce, reuse, and recycle. Recycling became the predominant of those three Rs because it was a practice that was pretty easily put into play by the town's Department of Public Works to ask residents to separate their recyclables from their conventional trash. And it was enforceable. Whereas reduce and reuse, which actually have a much greater potential to have a positive impact on the environment, rely more on one's personal decisions about what they consume, what they purchase, what they choose to repair, to share with neighbors, et cetera. Next slide. So our proposed mission is looking something A lot of it continues what the committee has already been doing. We want everyone to be aware that what they put in conventional trash, as opposed to their blue bins, is incinerated up in North Andover at a waste-to-energy facility. So yes, anything you throw in there that you don't think is burnable is actually attempted to be burned. And it's fairly inefficient, but it does, that plant does generate some electricity that goes back into the grid. Next slide, please. So we are really looking to change the way folks think about what they consume and what the possibilities are for reducing the amount of solid waste that we generate. Just think about the food scraps that you put in your conventional trash, if you're not composting or diverting those. That's wet, heavy trash that's sent up to Andover to be burned. It doesn't actually burn that well. It's very heavy. It costs the town more to haul it up to Andover than if you choose to compost in your own backyard or hire a service that will pick it up at your curbside. So in that second paragraph, you'll see, I went into some detail here, but along with diverting organics, we want to reduce the use of plasticware, both, you know, that our retailers are, are giving us or foisting upon us. Be aware about excessive packaging in things that you purchase. Minimize that contamination in your blue bin. Everyone's heard about the changes in policy from, from Asian countries about accepting the bales of recyclables that are generated by the material sorting facility that we use, that Green Works owns. That policy was, you know, was enacted two years ago because of all the contamination that we put into our blue bins. Some of it is avoidable, some of it isn't. We want to start teaching folks how to repair things. In fact, we'll be holding a repair cafe in Arlington sometime in the fall. Repurpose items. Instead of throwing them away, swapping and sharing. Again, the idea is to reduce the amount of solid waste that we generate. It'll save the town a lot of money. It'll protect our environment. With all this, the committee is also wanting to add into the bylaw a change to our name from Recycling Committee to Zero Waste Arlington. Next slide, please.
You have about a minute left.
Okay. So below our new name there, you'll see we've expanded the three Rs to eight Rs. We hope you'll take a look at that, take it to heart, think of how you can practice these things in your own home and at your business. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Connor?
I rise, James O'Connor, Precinct 19. Having watched tonight's news and the fact that Massachusetts now is storing waste that was collected from our recycle bins from January of 2018, we need to show the state that Arlington wants to be number one. We need to start recycling more, repurposing more, using our waste for reuse purposes. And I rise totally in favor of this warrant article.
Mr. Peluso?
I went to a meeting of, Ted Peluso, Precinct 6. I went to a meeting at the Council on Aging called Coffee and Conversation about a week or 10 days ago. And a lady from the Recycling Committee gave a talk to about 30 seniors. And all I have to tell you is if the Recycling Committee is represented by people like that lady, you should say yes to anything they recommend.
Hi, Jordan Weinstein, Precinct 21. I just have a question. About a year ago, when I was at the, as a delegate at the convention, the state convention, I happened across somebody in a smaller town in Western Mass who, who ran the recycling program. And he confided in me that much of the stuff that we put now in our recycling bins is no longer actually being recycled because China has refused to, to take our recycled stuff. So I just wanted to get a sense from somebody what the reality is. When we put plastics that are recyclable, tin cans or aluminum that's recyclable, glass, certain glass, things that are, that are supposedly recyclable, what is actually being recycled? And if it's not, what's the solution?
Well, you're correct. As I alluded to, contamination is the reason why China changed their policy. You know, their labor rates have risen, and they no longer want to pick through the bales of plastic that are sent them and sort out the things that aren't plastic in there, you know, that represent contamination. So right now, a lot of the material recovery facilities that I referenced before, like the one owned by JRM, that's called Green Works up in Peabody, they have to request a waiver from the Commonwealth, from the DEP, because their bales of plastic are not, are not saleable anymore in the way they had been. So they're getting waivers to either send them to incineration, or they're being shipped at, if they can find a buyer that's out of state and where the transportation costs are low enough where it makes economic sense, they're shipping them to another state that will process those. There are specific materials that are very difficult to process in Massachusetts, and one is glass, actually. There's no longer a glass processing facility in the state. So most of the glass that's separated at JRM, at their Green Works facility, is not being turned back into glass, but there are other markets for, for the broken-up glass. So it's not being sent up to an incinerator, but it is not being turned into glass, typically speaking. I see Charlotte Milan in the audience, and if she's welcome to come up and add anything else, if the moderator allows.
If there's an appropriate question. Okay. Mr. Moore?
Christopher Moore, Precinct 14. I move to terminate debate on this question.
Motion to terminate debate in the article. It's been seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Debate is terminated. It's two-thirds vote. We have now before us the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen regarding the Recycling Committee and their mission and their name. All in favor, please press one for yes, if you wish to do so, or two for no. One for yes, two for no. Two hundred, eight in the positive, four in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. Two oh eight to four. And that closes Article 28 and brings us to Article 29. Bylaw Amendment Regulation of Polystyrene. Ms. Brazil, you want to present on this?
Julie Brazil, Precinct 12, and a member of the Recycling Committee. I'm going to do the first half and then toss it over to another member. This proposal is a recommended first step to reduce the use of some materials that have bad effects on the health, on our health and the environment. I want to thank the Select Board for their support and the great questions they asked during our first hearing, which really helped us get the wording and our focus. In this proposal, we distinguish between what restaurants and others who serve food to the public can use and what residents can buy at retail stores. The restrictions are tighter for food service. If the ban is approved, no foam products can be given out or sold in Arlington. Grocery stores can't sell foam cups or plates, and restaurants can't use foam containers. People renting town facilities will be advised that Arlington prohibits the use of things like foam coffee cups. But nothing will prevent residents from buying foam products elsewhere for their personal use. Food service will need to phase out the use of polystyrene plastic products as well, but they can replace them with other plastics. Some towns have required the replacement products to be fully compostable and biodegradable. But we're recommending a first step that is much more gradual, so restaurants have time to find the best products for their needs. Food packaged outside of Arlington in polystyrene products can be sold, so as not to create chaos for stores that are trying to sell chicken pieces packaged in foam trays. But if a meat department in a grocery store prepares their own cuts, they will need to switch to a non-polystyrene product. All of this is increasingly common in Massachusetts and around the country, so we are very much in line with other communities. And there are a growing number of replacement products available, so we hope this is an easy transition for Arlington. We all know that single-use plastic items are an increasing issue in the world. The plastic in the ocean is contaminating our food and harming animals. But banning all single-use plastic is a giant step, and the Recycling Committee, now Zero Waste Arlington, will be working on more targeted efforts that keep us in line with the broader movements, so we all have time to adjust our expectations and habits. Polystyrene, plastic number six, is not always recyclable, so of all of the plastics, this is the one to reduce first. As curbside guidelines evolve and the markets change, and if things change drastically, it'll be an easier transition down the road.
Good evening. Jim Ballen, Precinct 6, and a member of the Recycling Committee. As Julie mentioned, there are readily available alternatives to polystyrene containers. These include number one and number five plastic, paper-based containers, aluminum containers, and biodegradable or compostable containers. The Recycling Committee has a frequently-asked question guide on the Town Meeting webpage for this article that lists the alternatives and approximate pricing. Foam takeout containers are typically the cheapest out there, but there are alternative products that typically only cost a few pennies more. We estimate around seven cents more for a number one plastic clamshell. For compostable containers, the cost is about 20 cents more. We always encourage businesses to ask customers if they need plastic utensils, straws, et cetera, instead of routinely providing them. After all, if you are bringing your takeout home, you don't need plastic utensils. So I'd like to briefly summarize some outreach efforts that the Recycling Committee did with Arlington businesses. And I have some actually updated numbers from what's on the slide there. We identified 97 potentially affected businesses in Arlington. That was 76 food service establishments and 21 retail stores. The Recycling Committee members went out through town and visited about 75% of those businesses. We discussed the article before you today with them. We found overwhelming support or acceptance for this ban. 30% were supportive of the bylaw. 70%, said they were accepting of it, and none voiced opposition to this. We found that most of the chain restaurants were supportive, but many of them said only their corporate offices could officially endorse it. Of the businesses we surveyed, we found about 25% use polysty, do not use polystyrene products, and about 75% used some. Many businesses told us that the customers want greener products, and they were moving in that direction anyway. You know, for example, I'm sure many of you have heard that Dunkin' Donuts is phasing out all polystyrene foam cups next year. The Recycling Committee is also working with the school department to reduce polystyrene single-use containers and products in schools. So with regard to implementation and enforcement, the bylaw was supported by the Arlington's Health and Human Services Department. They would ensure compliance during annual food inspections. The bylaw is, would go into effect on January 1st of 2020. That would give businesses the next eight months or so, till the end of the year, to use up the rest of their polystyrene takeout containers. Enforcement is similar to the plastic bag ban in that there's a, the bylaw has a warning for the first violation and is subject to penalties for subsequent violations. And waivers may be issued by the Board of Health for any businesses that need more time to comply with the deadline. So finally, let me, the reasons why we would like you to support this are pretty much listed up there. I won't read them, but I did want to just summarize why we hope you will support this. With regard to this limited plastic disposal container ban, Arlington businesses did not object. The Select Board unanimously approved. Health and Human Services was supportive. Thirty-three different communities in Massachusetts have already done this. That includes our neighbors in Cambridge, Somerville, and Lexington. And as we've heard, there is a growing movement in the country to reduce disposable plastic use. And finally, we believe this is the right thing to do for both public health and the environment, and to move Arlington toward a more sustainable future. So we appreciate your support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to address the article? Sir?
Timorkaya Yantar, Precinct 7. I think this should be a quick question. The phrasing of the new bylaw refers to food service containers. So I don't buy Styrofoam cups or plates at Stop &amp; Shop for home use, but if I wanted to, would that be allowed?
Ms. Brazil?
No, retail stores will have to take all Styrofoam products off the shelves.
So what's the language of food service containers when I'm not a food service?
That's a retail facility. So if you're buying it on the shelf in a plastic bag, a whole bag of coffee cups?
Right.
They have to, that's a retail use, and retail establishments are prohibited from selling polystyrene.
They're prohibited from selling polystyrene disposable food service containers. I'm not a food service. How is that language the right language?
I believe in Section 2G.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're, in that, the legal term food service container, simply, it's the fancy lawyer way of saying a cup, a bowl, a plate.
Okay, so it's not just being, such things being used at a food service?
Right. It's just, you can't buy it.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for wasting your time, people.
This person, two behind Brian, someone down their head there. Yes, you did two. Pass. Okay. Now your turn. Yep. Now we'll hear you. Maybe we can get the vote in.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim DiTulio, Precinct 12. And I'm perfectly cognizant of the fact that I'm all that stands between you and the bake sale. So I am an enthusiastic supporter of this article. I was one of the leaders of the effort two years ago, the Citizens' warrant article on the plastic bag ban. And I feel like that episode was instructive of what we face again tonight, which is a reasonable proposal, well thought out, well presented, and most importantly, after an overwhelming vote from this body, extremely well implemented by the town, working with businesses, coordinating together. And I think the most important point from all of that was, and kudos to the town manager, the town administration, most importantly, Health and Human Services, that you just didn't hear much about it. Because when it happened, it was kind of a non-event, including businesses just got on board. There was a big enough lag time for them to phase out their product and to welcome There was a big enough lag time for them to phase out their product and to welcome in the new. And ultimately, it's sort of a symbol of exactly what we should be doing going forward on similar issues, just like this one. I mean, we've all been there with these products. You get them. You don't really have a choice. You go to a popular restaurant, and that's what they give you, your takeout order. You know, people often say, "It's about consumer choice. If you don't want it, you don't need it." Well, maybe that's the case with bags and that sort of thing from time to time, but it is not realistic for the consumer to bring Tupperware with them every time they go out to eat and do takeout. That's just never going to happen, even if you're environmentally conscious like myself. That's just not going to happen. So we need this article. Moreover, several of the businesses in town that are probably... And they're wonderful businesses, and they have wonderful food, but probably the worst offenders on this particular issue, have businesses in other communities that have actually either banned polystyrene or have just banned polystyrene, like Newton did just about two weeks ago. So either they have other locations that are already doing this, or they have locations that are about to be doing this, so this should not be a huge transition. Also, if Dunkin' Donuts can do this, folks, the worst offender, the most ubiquitous of the polystyrene cups is the Dunkin' Donut cups, then we can do this. And I guess as a closing note, I'd simply say, we all see, it's disheartening, the multitude of reports that night after night, we see UN reports and reports from our government and foreign governments about just how sick our planet is right now and how much sicker it's going to get unless we start changing our habits. We're all going to need to leave our comfort zones over the next few years when it comes to the way we live our lives. This is one of the easy ones. This is the low-hanging fruit. In fact, it's not even the low-hanging fruit. It's the fruit on the ground. We can just pick it up, and don't put it in a polystyrene container when you do. I urge you to vote yes in this, because this is the easy ones, folks, and I wish I could say Arlington was in the vanguard on this, but as you've heard, we're actually not. But at least it's not too late to get on board, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's take our break. Come back in seven minutes, then he has the floor. You have the floor. Quiet, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Goff, Precinct 7.
Oh, Mr. Goff.
I move to terminate debate on this article and all matters before it.
We motion to terminate debate in the article and all matters before us. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? To vote... It is a two-thirds vote, and I declare it... The article is... Debate is terminated. We have now before us a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen for banning of polystyrene. If you're in favor, please press 1. If you're opposed, please press 2. So 1 for yes to ban, 2 for no. It's a positive vote. 192 in the affirmative, 3 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That brings us to... Closes Article 29. Brings us to Article 30. I don't have an Article 30.
No action.
No action. Oh, wait. That was on our... Nope, it wasn't. We have a recommended vote of no action. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? No action vote, and I so declare it. 5119, no action. That brings us to Article 32.
31.
31 was on the consent agenda. It carried by a vote of... Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was. No one held it. Who held it?
It was held.
The clerk and I didn't have it, but if you guys think it was held...
It was held.
Okay. Article 31. Who wants to present on it? Eric, you're up.
Yeah, I had it on the consent agenda. Yeah. They don't think it is.
I was having my cookie. Eric Helmuth, the Chair of the Precinct 12, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So from the very beginning of our existence, everybody called it the CPAC, the CPA Committee, because we love our acronyms, they're useful, and we already had a CPC, so Capital Planning Committee. So I like to call this the CPA... The CPC Disambiguation Act to eliminate the confusion, and frankly, we got tired of having to explain it in a report that's in your hands every year and in other reports that were usually referred to informally as the CPA Committee, so we'd like to just make that formal. The Town Council did some research and determined that there's nothing in this that contravenes the state statute regarding the CPA. We just have to have a Community Preservation Committee, but there's nothing that says what it has to be called.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of changing the name as recommended, please vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. 163 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 31 and brings us to Article 32. Bylaw amendment pre-protection and preservation. Yes. Ms. Doug, you want to get up and make that? Yes. Doug's going to make the administrative change.
Doug Heim, Town Council. I just want to note that there's one administrative change to this bylaw. Sorry. I hated John, my administrative change motion. Instead of saying "public shade trees on the property," it should say "public shade trees near the property." So you'll see that in...
Definition of tree plan.
Yeah. Definition of tree plan, it is... The tree plan, second sentence, the underlined "public shade trees on the property" should read "public shade trees near the property," because if they're public shade trees, they're not on a private property by definition. Okay?
Near. N-E-A-R.
If you look in the definition of tree plan, page 13, second line, underlined, it says "public shade trees on the property," it should read "public shade trees near the property."
Near.
Public shade trees would by definition not be on private property. Thank you.
So we're going to make that change administratively.
I'll explain it when I go through.
Okay. Ms. Stamps, you now have the floor.
Susan Stamps, Precinct 3, member of the Tree Committee. The... For anybody who doesn't know, which apparently a lot of people don't know, because the town survey showed that something like 60% of the people didn't realize that we do have a private property tree bylaw, which we... A town meeting passed in 2016 because people were upset that lots were being clear-cut for construction, and we put together a bylaw in consultation with developers, and we had fantastic support from the Select Board, which we've been very grateful for over the years. And what it does is it regulates the removal of trees on private property during major construction, demolition, building a new house, or putting on an addition where it's going to increase the footprint over 50%. And it only applies to the section of the property which is in the setback, which is the frame around the property. It's usually about 10 feet in from the lot lines, sometimes called the side yards and the front yards, but it's the frame around the property. Those are the only trees that are affected, and they have to be... They're called protected trees if they are in the setback and if they're healthy. So if people want to... And it's only during major construction. So if you just have a tree you want to remove and you're not doing major construction, then that's your business. So we made changes to the bylaw last year, and then we've got other changes this year, and it's all in service of trying to maintain and increase the tree canopy in town, which the town has been... Town meeting has been very supportive, and we really appreciate that. So the vote, the suggested vote, is in the Select Board's... The Select Board's report, and other than that change... Well, okay, I'll just... So the first change... There are six changes that we're requesting. So the first one is in the definition of protected tree. Right now, as I just said, a protected tree was on the property in the setback, a healthy tree, of a certain size. And the size in the original bylaw was 10 inches in diameter, or DBH diameter, breadth height, so 10 inches in diameter. We are asking to reduce the size to 8 inches, which is very common. The Lexington is 8 inches. One of the... I think it's Wellesley is 8 inches, but it's just, it's going to allow us to save more The... Also, under the bylaw, the contractor who is going to be building on the property has to submit a tree plan to show where the protected trees are located, and then have a discussion with the tree warden about what they're going to do about those trees. Are they going to either remove them and pay, or remove them and plant to replace them, or just leave them alone? The second change that we would like in the bylaw is to add on the tree plan to show nearby public trees, because we have run into situations where tree plans approved and the demolition has happened and the foundation is dug, and then all of a sudden, the tree warden gets a call that the contractor needs to remove the public... The beautiful, big, public shade tree that is right where the driveway is on the plan. So that's why we want to add nearby street trees to the plans. And especially people who live in the Web Cowat neighborhood and know exactly what I'm talking about. The third change is that also on the tree plan, we want to add that the contractor will put how the critical root areas of the existing trees on the property will be protected. We didn't put that in originally because it's kind of complicated, and that... But now that one of the other changes we're adding to the bylaws to give the Select Board more latitude in rulemaking, so that now we can write rules that will define critical root zone and how those are going to be protected, so that trees don't inadvertently die during construction. And so this just adds to the bylaw that the critical root zones will be protected. And also, that tree removal includes the definite... That if you inadvertently kill a tree because you've been... You run heavy equipment over the roots, that that's considered killing a tree. And if you kill a tree without saying that you're going to... It's going to be removed, then there's going to be a fine to pay. The most important... The fifth and most important, I think, change that we're making to the bylaw is, as I mentioned a minute ago, if someone wants to remove a protected tree, they will either pay a certain amount of money into the Trees Please Fund, which is set by the Select Board, which is $375 per inch of width, or they can plant a new tree, which is minimum 2 and 1/2 inches. We want it... We're going... We're asking to remove the option of planting and just have... Just pay. And the reason why we're doing that is because we've discovered that planting is not being successful. The tree warden did a survey of all the tree plans in all of 2017 and all of 2018, which has pretty much been the entire time the bylaw's been in effect, and only looked at the ones where trees were being planted, and only looked at the ones where 180 days had passed, because contractors do have 180 days after they get their certificate of occupancy to plant a tree, and found that there were... There were six sites altogether, and the first one, the contractor paid, so that didn't count. But another one, the trees were planted and looked good, but then on the third one, on two of them, they were not planted at all, and on the... Another one, the trees were planted, but they were dead, and then the last one, the trees were planted but failing. So that's a pretty poor... Pretty poor result, so we decided we just need to remove that option, and then we're going to have more money to plant more trees in town.
Okay, that's your time, Ms. Stamps.
Yeah, and that's fine. I'm done. Thank you. Hope you vote yes.
Thank you. Have this...
Mustafa Veriglou, Precinct 10, and I just have a question with this change we made from on to near. I might just have to ask, what does near constitute? And is it... You know, I understand inside the setbacks, but it just seems... I'm all for the article. I'm all for having this pass. I just don't want to put a loophole in it where somebody says it's not near. I'm just not... I don't care about that tree. Or would the remedy of it being a public tree save us anyway, and the intent would be carried?
Doug Heim, Town Council. I think it's really subject to a pretty reasonable interpretation. Public shade trees have to be in a specific place. Usually, we call it the tree belt. So if you're looking at a property and the tree plan, the way it usually designates where the trees are, you're going to mostly be talking about trees that are essentially on the other side of the sidewalk in front of your house. If you've got a corner lot, it might be a little bit different, but if you're really talking about, you know, a situation where, say, there's a public shade tree across the street, I think it's pretty reasonable to say that that's not near enough that it has to be designated, because it can't possibly be affected by the construction activity.
If the heavy trucks go over that side of the street as they back into the driveway? I mean, that's the sort of stuff I'm... I mean, I guess, and we can think of thousands of scenarios, but I just want to make sure we're protected.
Yeah, if folks damage a public shade tree, and Ms. Stamps alluded to this earlier, there's a separate remedy for the town under state law for public shade trees. I think what the purpose of this addition is, is oftentimes what we're finding is, we set up this tree plan so that we would have a good idea of what needs to be protected on the site, but we weren't including public shade trees, and so at the last minute, we're scrambling to figure out whether a public shade tree has been damaged by construction activity. Usually, our public shade tree hearings are if somebody wants to cut it down, but if they're inadvertently damaging it, that's not usually covered. So it kind of gives the town a better idea of what activity might affect these things and the way that we can plan ahead.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, 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 no. Just because you put your hand, it doesn't mean it's your turn. Right behind her, yeah. You're on the list, though.
Greg Christiana, Precinct 15. So to follow up on the previous question, is there a particular... Mr. Moderator, perhaps someone can answer this, Mr. Heim or Ms. Stamps. Is there a particular reason why a more technically rigorous definition wasn't used rather than near, like a certain distance, or the tree overhanging the property, or something to that effect?
Doug Heim, Town Council. I think the idea is... I can understand the concern that it'd be, in some ways, attractive to have something within, you know, 10 feet of the property line, but when you start to look at what the tree plans actually entail, it's pretty obvious, when you're looking at them, what things would really be affected, and it'd be nice to give our tree warden a little bit of latitude for him to make that judgment. My understanding, without being a tree expert, is that every tree is a little bit different, and they're... Depending on the type of tree, their critical root zone might be a little bit different, things of that nature. I think we wanted to avoid an overly technical description in the article, and I'd also note that the notion of these regulations, that we would transparently and clearly give the Select Board authority to sort of... the select board authority to sort of define things with a little bit more clarity as it becomes necessary implementing this, rather than coming back to town meeting every other year to, you know, adjust something in the tree bylaw.
Right, that strikes me as very reasonable. Thank you. I'm, I'm supportive of this article.
Mr. Chalkut?
Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. I'm not an expert in how these bylaws are written, but I noticed that things that are defined seem to be capitalized when they're referenced again. So, Mr. Moderator, I want to ask whether there might be administrative corrections to some areas where I see inconsistencies.
What, what inconsistencies do you see? Let's discuss them.
First one is, under the definition of tree plan, near the right edge of the paragraph, the words protected tree, where it says, "Critical root zones of each protected tree." I noticed that definition is capitalized everywhere else, so maybe we should be consistent there?
Mr. Heim? Does that make a critical difference in the bylaw?
No.
Okay, so we can make that administrative change and capitalize those two words, protected tree, in the fourth line of the word, of the tree plan definition, to make it consistent throughout?
The second example I'm curious about is Section 4C. The phrase "tree fund" is capitalized, as if I might find a definition for it, but I don't know if that's defined somewhere else.
It's "tree fund" somewhere else?
And I also want to add, I'm not trying to waste anybody's time, but somebody's noticed at the end of the last meeting, let's make a, like, last-minute change so we don't look like idiots. And I think these are the kinds of things that, if we're going to write these laws anyway, we might as well have them be self-consistent, so, being a nitpicker, but I hope with some purpose.
No, no, there are, your comments are well taken. Tree fund?
So, Doug Heim, Town Council. I capitalized "tree fund" because the, and this is not actually a change to the current bylaw, that's in the prior existing language, to my recollection, because we have something called a tree fund. It's not defined in the bylaw, but it's a specific account that we use. It's really just to try to increase the sort of readability of the bylaw.
Okay, to make it, kind of call it out as being something special, is kind of the gist of it.
Yep.
And then I think the other one's probably more straightforward. It's Section 6 Administration, near the right edge of the paragraph, to further definitions, tree plan requirements. I just noticed that tree plan struck me again as something that, since we're capitalizing it everywhere. What do you think?
We can capitalize those two as well.
All right, my work here is done. Thank you very much.
Very bottom sentence on that page, where it's "tree plan" will be capitalized. Actually, it's, yep, tree plan, under six, under administration. Okay, Ms. Memmon?
Mr. Moderator, Zerina Memmon.
Memmon.
Precinct 21, thank you. So I stand here to, first of all, we are excited. We just got a tree planted yesterday, so I applaud the tree committee and the tree wardens to do their job, or to help us get a tree replaced that had problems last year that had to be cut down. There are a couple of things that I just want to point out before I go back to that tree. One is, I still don't like this diameter at breast height. I think it should be circumference, because how are people measuring this diameter? Is there a way to measure this? I mean, oh, on a tree?
Ms. Stamps?
Okay.
Ms. Stamps is going to tell you how they measure it.
Okay. 很简单. Diameter at breast height is, I'm not a tree person either, but as I understand it, it's a term, it's a term of art used by arborists, and I believe Clarissa told me, if I'm wrong, it's four feet off the ground.
Okay.
Is that DB, is that, yeah, so whatever the circumference, the diameter of the trunk is, four feet off the ground.
Okay. Because I was concerned about the breast height could be LeBron James versus a very short person, so, you know, I don't know. The second thing is, the tree that we did get was Japanese lilac. And I was just wondering, is there consideration to native trees in, in planting, replanting?
Susan Stamps, Precinct 3, if I can answer?
Yes, yes, please.
That, well, the, on the tree bylaw does provide that it will be a native species, and as far as public street trees, I, I think that the tree warden is trying to also plant native species. I'm not, perhaps Mr. Radamacher could address that.
Mr. Radamacher?
Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works. We do, when possible, plant native trees, but our selection is limited. We're also trying to plant trees that will survive, that are hardy for the street tree environment, and so there are other species we will mix in as well.
Great. One other thing about the tree that was planted yesterday, I got two sets of instructions, one on the tree itself, there's a big label, and then a little pamphlet that was given to me. And I just want to say, with the tree plant, okay, let me finish this thought. The instructions that are on the tree planting, watering are not clear. Sometimes there are two different directions. Is there a way to address that?
Well, you should call Public Works.
Okay.
And discuss that with them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Revalek?
Mrs. Preston, I got you. You don't have to keep raising your hand.
Steve Revalek, 111 Sunnyside Avenue, Precinct 1. One of the changes I'm aware of, or one of the proposed changes, is removing the option to replant a tree and instead require payment into the town's tree fund. Mr. Moderator, I do have a couple of questions regarding the tree fund, if I may?
Yes.
So first, I was speaking with Mr. Radamacher during the break, and I've actually found out that there are two tree funds. So I'm wondering, can we get a description of what these funds are, and approximately what the balances are of them, and what the different purposes are?
Are they under his control? Mr. Radamacher, are those funds under your control? Okay, can you answer his question, please?
Sure, yeah. Mike Radamacher, Public Works. One is, we call it the Trees Please Fund. It's been around for many years. Originally was created to, for a place for donations to be kept. We do receive donations for tree planting, and also we would put money there for fines for street tree violations. It was not a huge sum, a huge sum of money, but it was a, a place to keep these dollars. It averaged around $2,000 to $4,000, a budget that would revolve from one year to the next. The other fund that we have is actually a line item in our operating budget for the purpose of planting trees. Currently, I think it's at, proposed at this year for $65,000, that line item. And the fund balance in the Trees Please Fund, the earlier fund I mentioned, is currently at $35,000. That has grown as we have increased the fines for violations of street tree damage, and also this bylaw. And the thought is, as that fund becomes a more reliable revenue source, it can then complement the operating budget.
So, so then, if it started at 2K and it's now at 35, so we took in about $30,000 in fines over the course of the year?
Yeah, we had, it had grown a little bit prior to that. Around the year 2014, we started increasing the fines, and it grew to about 20 at that point, and we received about $15,000 in FY '18, and we're about $6,000 currently in FY '19.
Okay, thank you. Two more questions, and I'll just keep these, keep these quick. Roughly, how many trees have we planted in the last year, or do we plant in a typical year?
In FY '18, we planted 225, and in FY '19, our goal is for 300, and 300 moving forward.
Okay, and finally, could you describe the, the process of how you decide where to, where the trees are planted, and who makes the decisions?
We typically, in previous years, we had planted trees based on where requests came through our online request system that's open to residents, as well as phone calls, whatnot. So that was typically how we would plant trees in the past. We have also, since, I think Ms. Stamps mentioned this, we have created a tree management plan, which has helped us to learn of areas that maybe have a lesser tree canopy in town. So we reserve a portion of our tree planting to try to repopulate areas that are deficient.
All right, very good. Thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Yep.
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. And I really have a question whether, if this bylaw should pass, whether there's a process in place to reach out to tree removal companies, so that they are aware of the changes in terms of the diameter of the tree that can be removed. I just wanted to know, make sure that, you know, the information was disseminated appropriately, and if somebody can address how that information would get to tree removal companies, or whether it's just incumbent of them to realize the law has, the bylaw has changed.
Mr. Radamacher's going to address it.
Mike Radamacher, Public Works. We, we, we have information posted at, in the Inspection Services Office, where a lot of permits are generated, and the contractors spend a lot of time, so we're educating folks there. And the tree warden is constantly reaching out to contractors as well to inform them of these changes. And when, the tree plan now is a fairly common requirement for this work, and so as the tree plan is created, our tree warden is explaining to the creator of that plan the changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Mr. McCabe?
I stand to terminate debate on Article 32 and all matters before it.
Motion to terminate debate on Article 32 and all matters before it. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it. That brings us to the vote on Article 32 as presented. All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. And go ahead and vote. 1 for yes, and 2 for no. 203 in the positive, and 1 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 32, and brings us to Article 33. The board, the select board is going to defer to Ms. Pyle to present on this article.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Pyle. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10, and I'm also a member of the town's Residential Study Group. This article was submitted, again, as a citizen's petition under my name, only because the Residential Study Group missed the filing deadline to have it considered as a town article. This article was endorsed and supported and voted on favorably by the Residential Study Group. I'd like to briefly give some context for this proposal. In 2017, Town Meeting approved a group of articles put forward by the Residential Study Group that were rolled into a package we called the Good Neighbor Agreement. The Good Neighbor Agreement, which is administered by Inspection Services, contains certain protections for surrounding properties when there is major new construction in the residential districts, such as tear-down, rebuilds, or large-scale additions that meet certain requirements, size requirements under the zoning bylaw. The Good Neighbor Agreement provides that when there is a proposed building demolition, open foundation excavation, or large addition, that the person doing the new work must send written notification to the surrounding neighbors to provide information on the type of work that is going to occur, including a site plan, a work schedule, the hours of construction, any protections for abutting property that will be in place, and also contact information for the builder or developer, in case there is any problem, neighbors will know who to reach. A major purpose of the Good Neighbor Agreement is to reduce tensions that could be caused by major new construction in the established neighborhoods, and to make sure that there are no surprises about what will occur doing a major bit of construction or new development. I'm pleased to report that the Good Neighbor Agreement has been working well since it was implemented in 2017. However, the Residential Study Group realized that there was an important component that was missing from the Good Neighbor Agreement, and that we are asking you to correct by approving Article 33. Article 33 adds notice of removal of trees that are already subject to Arlington's Tree Protection Bylaw to the Good Neighbor Agreement. And these are the trees that you just heard about from the last article. And under this change, if there is a proposed major construction, like you heard about before, like a building demolition, an open foundation excavation, construction of a new home, or a large-scale addition, and where that work would also include removal of trees that are already subject to the town's Tree Protection Bylaw, the person doing the work must include notice of the proposed tree removal in the packet of information that they are already required to send to abutters before the work can begin. This would not require any separate mailing or burden on the builder or developer, it's just notification of intended tree removal of already protected trees, along with all the other notifications that are currently required under the Good Neighbor Agreement. The Residential Study Group proposed this article because there have been instances in which a developer has cut protected trees before notifying any abutters of the new construction with the Good Neighbor Agreement. This has created situations where there has been unnecessary surprise and bad feelings in the community. Where a major purpose of the Good Neighbor Agreement is to promote communication between the builder or developer and the neighborhood, and to facilitate dialogue between them, it would benefit everyone and reduce animosity if the Good Neighbor Agreement also included a provision for notification of any planned removal of trees that already fall under the existing protections of Arlington's Tree Protection Bylaw. This could also create an opportunity for a neighbor who is concerned about a particular tree to speak with the builder or developer before the tree is removed, and to potentially negotiate saving a tree that is meaningful to them before any construction starts. Since the Good Neighbor Agreement has to be sent before any site work can begin, adding this provision will cut down on surprise, and hopefully, it can also be used to save some trees in town. This article is supported by Arlington's Tree Committee. It's supported by the town's Residential Study Group. It was endorsed by the Select Board, and I ask that you approve it with a yes vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pyle. Ms. Preston?
I'm Joanne Preston, Precinct 9, home of the famous Webb Cowat tree that 65 residents fought to save after the developer had cut off all the roots of the street tree, and had, it turns out, had permission from the engineering department to put tunnels there. I'd like to announce just quickly, this is the second year there are buds, leaf buds on the tree, which is a sign that it will survive. I want to thank the, the town manager and the Select Board for arranging the funds from the developer to treat the tree. What I'm most concerned about is enforcement. I think we should really support this, but I'd like to know more specifics about how this is going to be enforced.
Mr. Byrne. Mr. Byrne's going to give you some.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Byrne, Director of Inspektual Services. It'll actually be pretty simple. I think we just need to add it to the sheet for the Good Neighbor Agreement. We already do this, by the way. We make sure that not as far as the neighbors, but we do not issue a demolition permit without Tim Laqueve's notification. No one gets a permit without speaking to him first. They talk about the tree.
This was the case that I, when they were cutting off the roots, I ran down to the special services. The engineering department had given him a permit to put a tunnel on each side of the tree and they were removing the roots.
You're asking how the building department will enforce this. It will be, we will add it to the sheet, make sure everyone knows it and it goes out with the Good Neighbor Agreement. And we always make sure that the contractor speaks to Tim before we issue a demolition permit. So I think that covers everything that's involved.
Before there's a tunnel permit, they'll have to talk.
Well, we don't issue tunnel permits, so I don't know what a tunnel permit is.
Mr. Chaplin wants to address it as well.
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. I think, Ms. Preston, what you're getting at actually relates back to the prior article in terms of the Tree Preservation and Protection Bylaw in that, in the situation on Webcoat Road, there was no requirement that public shade trees be included on the tree plan or any plan. And my recollection is that was sort of the confusion or problem with that where engineering was issuing a permit for trenches, not being fully aware about the existence of a public shade tree. With the passage of the prior article and the passage of this article, it will be much more clear where a public shade tree exists, so the tree warden needs to sign off on that before Mr. Byrne will issue any building permit.
They did sign off on the map that showed the tunnels.
Well, Ms. Preston, we're not going to debate what happened two years ago because there's nothing we can do about it from this. We can just pass bylaws to change it so it doesn't happen again.
But I'm glad to see there's going to be enforcement.
Mr. Revolak?
Steve Revolak, 111 Sunnyside Avenue, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, just given, so the case of someone doing construction perhaps involving demolition, they submit plans, including a tree plan, notating all the street trees. What is the timing, just roughly the sequencing of events between, you know, plan submission, plan approval, having the trees looked at, and, you know, when the work crews actually show up?
Mr. Byrne, can you give us a timeline?
Yeah, just, what order do things happen in? And when does the Good Neighbor Agreement get sent out? Or the notices required by the Good Neighbor Agreement sent out?
Michael Byrne, Director of Inspektual Services. The Good Neighbor has to go out, I believe it's 14 days before they start doing any work. Yes has to be received by the neighbors. As far as, what was the second one, the trees?
Yeah, just the phase in terms of.
How long it takes. Right now with demolition permits, we're running close to a month as it is. But in that meantime, they'll look up and see Tim. They've got to get all their sign offs from the utility companies, et cetera, and then so, it's probably around a month. It's just good timing.
Okay, so they show up with the plan, apply for a demolition permit, show a tree plan that gets reviewed by your department, reviewed by the tree warden. The notices get sent out and then demolition can begin.
Correct. Yep.
Correct. So in terms of, what the main difference here is this is just one more item or one more plan that's included with the material in the Good Neighborhood Agreement notification.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jamison?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. If we're going to keep ourselves consistent with the corrections made in the previous article, there's about six places here where some caps are needed. So very quickly, under A, protected trees. Under B, tree plan and protected tree removal. Under the underlined section at the bottom of C, protected tree removal. And D, protected tree removal. And again, in protected tree removal. The caps on those will take care of the things and make it consistent with the changes made to the previous article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
If you could just write those down on a scrap of paper and give them to the clerk, then we can make those administratively. You can do it after the meeting. Mr. Yantar?
Oh. Perfect. Timor Kai Yantar, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I move to terminate debate on Article 33 and all matters pertaining to it.
All in favor of terminating debate on Article 33 and all matters, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's unanimous vote and I so declare it, debate is terminated. That brings us to the recommended vote on Article 33 as presented in the report. All in favor, please press, press one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote, unanimous vote, 200 to zero. It's a vote and I so declare it. That closes Article 33 and brings us to Article 34. Amendment regulating outdoor lighting, dark skies. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9, and proponent. First, I want to thank the Select Board for voting unanimously to support the amendments here. This came before us five years ago. The previous bylaw restricted itself to residential lighting, so if you had a garage light that was shining into your neighbor's bedroom, it was covered under the bylaw, but something like what you see on the screen or anything on a commercial lot or anything on a town right of way was not included in the bylaw. And we came up with a compromise bylaw which the Select Board then agreed with and we put forth and was, next slide, enacted by a vote of 159 to 42 in 2014. The purpose of a dark sky bylaw that we have is to eliminate light pollution and glare, reduce negative impact on wildlife and ecosystems, and reduce energy consumption. And what we have now was modeled on two sources. One is the zoning bylaw on the town of Acton, which is very effective on dark sky issues, and the International Dark Sky Association Lighting Law, Model Law. Next slide, please. This came about after the town replaced all of its streetlights in 2013 when we got rid of all the high intensity orangey streetlights and replaced them with modern streetlights. And living in the center, I noticed immediately the night after they replaced them, a significant drop in light pollution in the neighborhood. Next slide. However, privately owned lights were not changed at that point and this particular light, this floodlight. Many of you were here five years ago, I could tell. This particular floodlight at the corner of Russell Terrace and Winslow Street shines in my bedroom window, so if I get up in bed, this orange thing is in my face. It's two blocks from my home and I live on the eighth floor. And really, do we need a light that shines up to the eighth floor from two blocks away? It seems absurd. So next slide, please. This is a view from my bedroom window, just for reference, and this was taken just slightly after dawn. And you can see in the back there, there's that orange light. Now, obviously, at sunrise, it looks a lot less noxious, but that thing throws an awful lot of light. Next. And this is what it looks like at ground level and you can see what it does to that neighboring house. Next. But it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, back in 2013, I went out to my front terrace and looked down at Armstrong Ambulance. And the picture on the left is how bright and wonderful their parking lot is. Picture on the right is the amount of glare or light pollution coming from it, which is next to nothing. You could hardly tell there is a well-lit parking lot a half a block away. This is the goal. And if we get to this point, we're going to have a much happier environment. Next slide, please. Now, the reason why this bloody light is still shining in my bedroom, five years after passing a bylaw and four years after filing an initial complaint under this bylaw, is that it's basically unenforceable. And here's what we're trying to do. One, we're going to eliminate the need to trigger, for a complaint to trigger this. A violation is a violation even if nobody complains. Two, we're going to require a permit from the Board of Select Board if you are placing one of these lights on town property, on the town right of way, on a utility pole, on a town street, in a town parking lot, or other town property. Next. It will prohibit the use of the old style bulbs. Note that Eversource is no longer installing these and not really maintaining them very much, but if they're there, they're stay there. And fourthly, if Eversource owns it, we don't have to go looking for who's paying the bill. What they generally do is you call up Eversource, you tell them they want a light, they put it up, they bill you, they own the light. So we're going to hold them accountable for their lights that are violating the bylaw. Next slide. And to tighten some of the definitions that were not included in the bylaw five years ago. So it makes it a lot more clear as to what we're allowing, what we're not allowing. Next slide. As in the current bylaw, there are certain types of lighting that is exempt from the bylaw. And this is consistent with good practice in other municipal bylaws and we worked this out five years ago. We're not making a change here. Next slide. So I'd like to ask you to do what you did on the last article and just hit that number one button and vote to approve these sensible changes in our lighting bylaw and, under seven minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Precinct 10. I have, would like to submit a minor article, excuse me, a minor amendment to this article.
Do you have a second?
Thank you. Basically, what it is in, if you sort of scroll down through in the exceptions, there are exceptions for special events which are approved by an appropriate town body, but it's restricted to the Select Board. And so I'm asking is that subsection four, under 3E4, be lighting during special events such as fairs, concerts, celebrations sponsored by the town of Arlington or approved by the Select Board or other appropriate town or school body. And this is basically because special events that are held in public parks are under the Park and Recreation Department and typically do not go before the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Foskett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Foskett, Precinct 8. I'm a little confused by this article. And the first question I have is, does this apply to residences?
Mr. Heim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. I think this has always applied to residences. It's not a change in terms of the way in which the bylaw generally works. Mr. Schlickman, this is your article. Have you made a change to that? I don't recall.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Yes, it technically applies to all property so that, yeah, I mean, if you had a single family residence or more commonly an apartment complex which had some really obnoxious bright light on it, yes, it does apply.
So I think, you know, from that point of view, I would contest that the article and probably its predecessor article, which I think I voted against five years ago, is poorly designed and difficult to interpret. I mean, what happens to houses that have steps and have lights on the steps? I mean, there's a certain degree of illumination that's needed for safety. The same thing is true for porches, for patios, for lights in backyards where families might entertain themselves after the sun goes down. I don't understand how those lights, that those, these standards can be interpreted under those conditions. In Section 2A, the only reference to brightness says, "directly or by creating unreasonably bright glare." Now, I don't know what that means. Any light that you turn on, we hope shines direct light, otherwise you wouldn't turn it on. And I don't know what unreasonably bright glare is. That's somebody's subjective opinion. So I think this is a flawed article. Probably the original article was flawed. And I have another question. Does this restrict all lighting to only being LEDs?
Mr. Heim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. I don't want to speak for the proponent of the article, but it really only defines a very specific type of lighting that you can't use in any way, shape, or form. Otherwise, it's the effect the lighting has. So you don't have to use LED lights. There's a specific type of lighting that you're prohibited from using, which is, I'm sorry, I forget the term for it, the specific type of bulb that.
Mercury vapor, high pressure sodium, and metal halide bulbs, I think.
So you can find an alternative. It doesn't have to be LED per se.
But it's not, in Section B, it's not just those three categories that are.
That's correct.
So if you have any other type of light, who actually decides whether the light's too bright, unreasonable, shining in the wrong direction, or otherwise being improperly used on private property? Do we ask Mr. Schlickman to come over and look at it or do we have an official?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Given the fact that this is not very well enforced and clearly the intent is on very bright lights such as the spotlight that we were showing, that's sort of the direction that we're looking to go to. This is consistent with international dark sky bylaws, so it's sort of a very common thing. There are fixtures that are rated for this, but nobody's going to be going and looking at illumination for stairs as they are either shielded or directly lit so that the light is pointing to the stair and not into your neighbor's bedroom.
But the question was, who enforces the bylaw?
I would suggest to the Town Meeting, that if we don't know who's going to enforce it and we don't know how it's going to be enforced and the standards are unclear, that this does not belong in the town bylaws. And I hope you can vote against it. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah, answer the question, please.
So you'll see in the, in Section 4 of the bylaw, previously Section 3, that it's enforced by the building inspector.
This woman over here? He have your hand up? Yep.
Beth Benedict, Precinct 21. I'm one of those people that are nervous. Might need seven minutes, sorry. But I probably won't. So I live in a house that has bright lights and I think that it's important to have bright lights because I have elderly parents who visit me. I have myself who walks down that street at night and I want to feel safe. And I feel like it's really very vague and I think that's all I'm going to say. I really hope you don't vote for this because it's not defined clearly.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Trembley?
Ed Trembley, Precinct 19. So as I read this, it looks like the bright lights that are on the front of the town hall and pointing straight up are legal. Is that right?
Mr. Heim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. You'll see in Section, what is that, 3E, the things that are exempt from the provisions of. of the bylaw. You'll also see that uplighting is defined in section 2D, and it notes that certain things are exempt, such as illumination of the United States flag, the flag of the Commonwealth, or other flags on town and school property, a building facade, or a public monument.
So the reality is, this doesn't really have much to do with dark skies. This has more to do with the light that really irritates Mr. Schlickman.
I'm going to leave that to Mr. Schlickman.
I don't think there's a question, Mr. Schlickman.
So there is, there is a really extraordinarily bright light that's on town property, and it illuminates the bike path. And I have personal knowledge, well, I guess not exactly personal, hearsay knowledge, that there've been complaints about this light. However, this light has also been part and parcel of the Arlington Police Department being able to catch somebody on the bike path who was up to rather nefarious things. And so, while I appreciate Mr. Schlickman's concern, and I can really appreciate how much this light really has irritated him for year after year after year, because we have heard about it a number of times. In the big picture, I think I'd have to vote no on this because it's hard to enforce. There is some public safety aspects of this, and oh, by the way, somebody asked about what kind of lighting is defined under this. Well, yes, it doesn't specify LED lights, but it bans everything else. So it kind of is, except for incandescent, but then nobody uses incandescent anymore. So I think the reality is, we probably ought to vote no. But join Mr. Schlickman in finding out who owns that light and really giving them a bad time so that they take it down.
Mr. Jamison?
I feel Mr. Schlickman's pain, although I think it's already, we already have a bylaw covering, because I have lights that are at least six properties away occasionally that come in through my bedroom window. I have a question about the section on a building facade across from our soon-to-be-new beautiful high school. Hopefully, pending a vote in June, there's the Leader Bank with their very tacky, colorful building facade lighting. Can we regulate that if I strike that section?
Mr. Heim? Beauty isn't the eye of the beholder, though.
Doug Heim, Town Council. One of the things that was inserted here is that if a sign is permitted under the zoning bylaw, it's going to be controlled by that process, which is very thorough. So I think that's the right way to... I wouldn't be sure of that. In other words, I'm not 100% sure exactly what sign you're talking about, but in terms of uplighting of signs, if that's going to be covered under this sign permitting process, then it wouldn't be covered by this. If it's not, and it's uplighting, that's illegal under this provision, then yes, it would be prohibited.
But it says uplighting except for building facades.
It says illumination of the United States flag, the flag of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, other flags on town and school property, a building facade, or a public monument.
So this is a building facade. They have, in the recess sections of the building, they have like purple color lights that are uplight.
Okay. Well, if it's illumination of a building facade, then it may not be covered. It would have to be a little bit, you're talking about a very specific case, and obviously have to consult with the building inspector as to what he considers to be part of the building facade and what he doesn't.
Okay. I'm going to give it a shot. I'm going to move to strike a building facade.
Ma'am, way in the back. Yeah. On Mr. Klein?
No, I think Mr. Jamison's going to write it.
He's got to put it in writing. Here.
Deanna Graham, Precinct 16. I just wanted to say that it seems to me that when we have a warrant come before us, it should really clearly explain the scope of the problem, and I don't feel like this really is explaining how this is a problem in town. I understand how it's a problem for you, Mr. Schlickman, but I don't understand the scope. And then I don't understand what the effect of passing this would be. How would this really affect our town? How would it affect the building regulations? And so for that reason, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. I vote yes on this. I'm rather fond of this article, partly, mainly for the very reasons that Mr. Foskett objects, and others object to. It basically asserts what most of us want on a good-faith basis. When it was originally presented a few years ago, it was explained very nicely. It doesn't ask much of people. It reminds me of the bylaw that says to have a couple of drinks, you have to have a meal. I forget exactly what that is. And people said, oh, you can't enforce that, and it's ridiculous, but the gesture was made, and it operates with some humor in bars. I've been in bars in Arlington. So I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Ms. Butler?
I got you, Mr. Holland. No, not yet. Ms. Butler's turn.
I'm not familiar with the International Model Law that's a part of this light pollution.
Nauman, Precinct?
Deborah Sirockin, Butler, Precinct 19. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
And I wondered if I could ask Mr. Schlickman some questions about that model law?
Ask the question, then we'll get some answers.
All right. Is there any specification as to how many lumens would be allowed? It's my understanding that lighting is sold and regulated normally by numbers expressed as lumens?
Mr. Schlickman, do you understand?
Yeah, I do understand the question. Yeah, the exist, we're just upgrading the existing bylaw in effect, but the International Dark Sky Association has standards for their endorsement for a bylaw. And there are stricter standards where you would go and regulate the number of lumens for a light, or the number of watts per acre, which would effectively change a lot more about the bylaw than we have right now. So yes, the International Dark Sky Association would advocate for regulating to that level, but this article doesn't seek to do that.
So the article does not incorporate that model law by reference?
No, it is informed by that law, and informed by the acting bylaw, to get to a point where it is a moderate law that seeks to serve the purpose of not having somebody else's bright light shining into your bedroom or where it doesn't belong.
But the, so the model law itself does specify lumens, but the proposed bylaw before us does not have that level of specificity.
Yes, our bylaw is not as strict as the one that is advocated for by the International Dark Sky Association.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Schlickman, have you finished your motion? No, excuse me, Mr. Jamison. Have you finished your motion? Can you present it and get a second?
Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. Upon the advice of Town Council, I've modified my proposed amendment. It would be, we would strike a building facade in that section and replace it with town, comma, school, comma, public building facades, comma. I request, kindly request a second so we can vote on it.
Have a second? Okay, it's been seconded. Yeah, I'll call you again.
Greg Christiana, Precinct 15. Mr. Moderator, might I ask a question of, I'd like to get at the public, any public safety implications of putting restrictions on lighting? This was alluded to by an earlier speaker. I thought possibly if we could have Police Chief Flaherty speak to that issue.
Chief?
Julie Flaherty, Acting Police Chief. We haven't received any complaints about any lighting or overlighting that I'm aware of, and we're in favor of any lighting that would help the safety and security of any of the residents.
And specifically with this amendment, I don't know to what extent you've reviewed this particular article, but any insight as to whether it would hinder public safety by reducing lighting as a result of this?
So we're concerned with the lighting that illuminates major intersections, crosswalks, and so forth. As a matter of fact, we just increased some of the lighting on one of the crosswalks that we've been having many pedestrian accidents at. So I don't think that this would hinder anything that would concern public safety.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Holland?
Roderick Holland, Precinct 7. I found myself, as you were presenting this, asking some of the same questions about residential applications. And I've come to understand that there's an existing bylaw that was passed here while I was off, I don't know, having a beer or something, that covered that, and that the current bylaw is kind of a harmless thing to constrain old Nixon crime lights on poles. And, you know, who can argue with that? However, it, a lot of us have been puzzled, I think precisely because we're not familiar with the existing bylaw. It might have been helpful to have, you know, rewritten the whole nest and presented it. And that might be helpful some other time if this doesn't go. I'll share one anecdote. I live on Grafton Street at a spot on Grafton Street where, that's a dark spot. There's a street light several houses down, there's a street light several houses up. And the porch light is a surrogate street light when I choose to turn it on. So I get the dark skies international movement. It's a good thing. And I get that lighting technology has changed, but we're awash in legacy residential lighting. And the problem with not so much this bylaw, but I think the existing bylaw, is that it leaves most of us a little confused about whether the charming old-glass bulb porch lights that we've got actually satisfy the requirements of the bylaw. So that's it for me. I'm honestly not sure how I'm going to vote for this. Taken in isolation, it seems harmless, but I'm not so sure about the current bylaw, which we're not voting for.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Second.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, my opinion, that's not a majority vote, so Mr. Yontar?
You know why I'm here. Timor Kai Yontar, Precinct 7.
Four people have arisen. We need seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move to terminate debate on Article 34 and all matters pertaining to it.
If we should terminate debate on Article 34 and all matters, please say yes. Terminate debate?
Yes!
Opposed? Okay, we have before us two recommended votes. First, we have Mr. Klein's recommended, excuse me, we have the recommended vote, and we have two amendments. First, we'll deal with Mr. Klein's amendment, then we'll deal with Mr. Jamison's. You should all have Mr. Klein's amendment, where he wants to add the words or other appropriate town, school bodies. All in favor, please press one for yes and two for no. Mr. Klein's amendment is accepted, and the recommended vote is so amended. Now we have Mr. Jamison's, where on section D, in the fifth line, he wants to strike the words "building facade" and replace them with the words "town, school, public building facades." That's been seconded. We're going to take a vote on that. So he wants to strike the word "building facade" and replace with "town, school, public building facades." If you're in favor of Mr. Jamison's amendment, please press one for yes, two for no. That amendment is also accepted. 126 in the affirmative, 65 in the negative. That brings us to the main vote of the Board of Selectmen as amended by the two articles. All in favor of the main motion as amended, please press one for yes, two for no. Yes, ma'am?
Would you like to recommend a vote for Schlickman's amendment?
No, no, the recommended vote is the whole thing is printed in their report, the whole thing that Paul Schlickman wants to do. Yes, sir. It's a positive vote, 117 in favor, 69 as opposed. Now, before we take that...
Notice of reconsideration, please.
Notice of reconsideration on what?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Now, on Monday, 5/6, we're going to take up Minuteman, the capital budgets, and the regular budgets. So we're going to take them out of order. Mr. Tosti, we have notice of reconsideration by Jamison on 34, Schlickman on 34.
You all have the budgets in the Finance Committee report and the capital budget report. The Minuteman handout will be sent out electronically, hopefully in the next two days, and we'll try to get it posted on the town website. That's the Minuteman presentation.
All in favor of German, or any other notices of reconsideration? Seeing none, all in favor of German, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? We'll see you Monday. Have a good weekend.